All right, so we're just missing Commissioner Isasi. I think we'll go ahead and get started. I'm sure she's calling in. Because it is 7:00 PM, so we'll go ahead and call our city commission meeting to order. To start off, we always ask that you join us for a moment of silence before the pledge of allegiance, and then we'll get to roll call. So if you'll join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, if you join me for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Next, we'll go to roll call. Here's Commissioner. All right, go ahead, City Clerk.
Yep. Commissioner Lanier.
Present.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Repart.
Here.
Commissioner Moody.
Present.
Commissioner Isasi.
Present.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes. And Commissioners, can I get a motion?
You froze, Mayor.
Oh, did I freeze up? All right, can I get a motion to excuse Commissioner O'Connor, who's out of town right now?
So moved.
Support.
All right, moved and supported. City Clerk, you want to call the vote?
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi.
Yes.
Commissioner Repart.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes. Thank you. All right, so before I introduce Ms. Griselda to share translation service options, I just want to walk through the agenda tonight and provide clarity to anyone who's watching who may want to call in. We have two opportunities for public comment tonight. The first one is on agenda items that we're voting on tonight. We have a full list of those from our standing committee meetings this morning, and then a second opportunity for public comment at the end on any other item. There may be some confusion. Earlier this morning, we did have a conversation about existing county cares money, and that did not pass, and so it is not on our agenda tonight. So if you are watching and you want to call in and speak to that issue, you'll call in at the second opportunity for public comment. So there's no agenda item tonight related to that or the ShotSpotter. So just want to be really clear in case there's confusion. So you can call if you want to provide public comment for either the first opportunity or second opportunity. You can call 456-3000 or 311. Hit number one. For the first opportunity related to agenda items, you'd hit number one, and for the second opportunity, you would hit five. So with that, I'll introduce Ms. Griselda Estrada to provide information about if you need translation services.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. My name is Griselda, and I'm here to assist our callers with the Spanish interpretation. I will now repeat the mayor's instructions in Spanish. Buenas noches. Gracias por atender la reunión de la Comisión de la Ciudad. Mi nombre es Griselda Estrada. Yo estoy aquí para asistir a nuestros llamantes con interpretación en español durante los periodos de comentario público de esta noche. Si usted desea hacer comentarios esta noche, habrá dos oportunidades. Si desea dar comentarios en los artículos en los cuales la comisión va a votar, por favor llame al 311 o al 616-456-3000, y presione el número uno, y luego vuelva a oprimir el número uno otra vez. Al fin de la reunión tendrá otra oportunidad de dar sus comentarios a la comisión. Llame al 311 o al 616-456-3000. Presione el número uno y luego el número cinco. Gracias. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, next up, we'll take us to our first opportunity for public comment. And again, these are public comments on agenda items that we talked about and voted on earlier today. The rules for public comment, we ask that you show your name, the city that you live in, and you'll be given up to three minutes to speak. On this first opportunity for public comment, we ask that you specifically state the agenda item that you wish to speak on. That'll put up the first opportunity for public comment, and we'll see if we have anyone in the queue, and then, oh, there you go. All right. So Daniel, do we have anyone in the queue?
We do, Mayor. Here comes the first caller.
Okay, thanks.
Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name, the city in which you live, and the agenda item you'd wish to speak on. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, I'm Andrew Kapanowski. Technically, I'm Walker, but I have a grand rap mailing address. I'd like to make a comment on agenda item number 11, on section one of the budget ordinance for fiscal year 2021. My comment is that I see that the city is accepting state support for area courts in that agenda item there, and I think we should do the same. Yeah, cares money that the county offered the city to support public safety. Basically, you know, I'm 24 years old. I've been here about a year now. I've seen, you know, I love it here, but recently, you know, with all the shootings that have been happening, you know, I just, you know, the shootings on 131, the shootings, I think there was one a couple of days ago on the northeast side. It seems like they're happening a lot, you know, the riots. And, you know, I think it's kind of a slippery slope that we need to catch early. You know, I'm kind of disappointed that that was a tie vote this morning. I think it should be something that we should really look into. I think we need that support right now, especially in these times. And I just wanted to call and enter the city to reconsider their vote on accepting that cares funding.
Thank you, caller.
All right, thank you. And again, that's not on the agenda tonight. If there's comments about that decision, please call in at the second opportunity for public comment, because we don't have an agenda item before us tonight about accepting cares money.
Here comes the next caller, Mayor. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name, the city in which you live, and the agenda item you wish to comment on. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Benjamin Soltes. I live in Grand Rapids, the city. I'm commenting on ordinance, the ordinance we adopted, number one, amending the section one of the budget ordinance 2015 for fiscal year 2021, amendment 09.
Caller, I've paused your time. Is this regarding the acceptance of the CARES Act funding?
This is regarding the acceptance of the funding for the state support for area courts.
Mayor, is that the same item?
Daniel, that's okay. That was part, that is part of that, if it's about the part, but.
Thank you. Caller, I'll resume your time now.
All right. I was just seeing that the city is looking to accept some state support for the area courts, and I was saying, I think that's a really good idea. I was also seeing that they also, the CARES Act was part of also either some support, and I think since we're looking into things for area courts, it also would be prudent to look into things for local public safety.
No, this, hold it. No, this is part of that. That was not part of that agenda item.
Yes, caller, if you'd like to speak on that topic, you can call 311, press option one, and then press option five. We'll come to that portion of the meeting in just a moment. Thank you, caller. Here comes the next caller. Thank you, caller. You're on with the city commission. Can you please lower the volume on your device? Oh. That caller hung up with us, Mayor, so there are no more callers in the queue.
Daniel, we're going to go ahead and close that opportunity for public comment, and that'll move us to approval of the minutes. And these are our minutes from our November 10 commission meeting. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, Commissioners, questions, comments, or edits? All right, City Clerk, will you call the vote?
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi.
Yes.
Commissioner Repart.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, it carries. All right, next up, we'll take us to petitions and communications.
The first one is a communication from Matt Franco regarding their resignation from the Uptown Corridor Improvement Authority and Uptown Business Improvement District Board.
All right, that is referred to Committee on Appointments.
Communications, 90 of them received, expressing opposition to the implementation of ShotSpotter technology.
That's received and filed.
Communication with Paul Lee regarding their resignation from the Uptown Corridor Improvement Authority and Uptown Business Improvement District Board.
That is referred to Committee on Appointments.
Communication received from Scott Atchison regarding a downtown information center.
That is received and filed.
And communication received from Sharon Osborne, expressing support for the implementation of the ShotSpotter technology.
And that is received and filed. All right, next up, we'll take us to reports of city officers.
The first one is Comptroller's Report for the period of October 29, 2020, through November 4, 2020, in the amount of $9,695,034.72.
That is received and filed.
And the Treasurer's Report for the period of October 24, 2020, through October 30, 2020.
And that is also received and filed. All right, next up, we'll take us to our consent agenda. So our consent agenda includes items that we talked about earlier today in one of our standing committee meetings, and when they were voted on, they were voted on unanimously. So tonight, with one voice vote, we'll adopt those items. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioner, any questions or comments? All right, call the vote on that, City Clerk.
Commissioner Isasi.
Yes.
Commissioner Repart.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, it carries. All right, and Commissioners, we don't have any items removed from consent, so that'll take us to our ordinances to be adopted, and we have one ordinance before us tonight.
It is an ordinance amending section one of the budget ordinance 2020-15 for fiscal year 2021, amendment number nine.
All right, can I get a motion?
So moved. Support.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioner Moody, you want to tell us about this?
Yes, Madam Mayor, these are ordinances that represents the 61st District Court, and the funds that they're going to be receiving for Domestic Violence Response Team, also for the Drug Sobriety Court, and for the sobriety court expansion, and also for the substance abuse and mental health services. These grants were mentioned today in the fiscal committee.
Great. Commissioners, questions or comments? All right, so roll call votes tonight.
Commissioner Repart.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier. Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, it carries. And Commissioners, can I get a motion to give this immediate effect?
So moved.
Support.
All right, moved and supported. City Clerk, will you call the vote on the immediate effect?
Commissioner Lanier.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi.
Yes.
Commissioner Repart.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, it carries. All right, Commissioners, so we don't have any resolutions or scheduled public hearings tonight, so that'll take us to our last opportunity for public comment. So this, if you are interested in making public comment on any other items, you can call in at 311 or 456-3000, and you can hit number one and then number five. So I'll turn to Daniel. We'll open up this last opportunity for public comment. I'll turn to Daniel to see if we have anyone in the queue.
At the time, there are no callers in the queue, Mayor. I'm not exactly sure if the callers from the previous portion would like to call in. Here comes one caller, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, my apologies, they have hung up.
Okay. All right, we'll close this opportunity for public comment, and I will turn to my colleagues on the commission, and I will start tonight with Commissioner Moody.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate all of the reports that were given today from Cal, all the way up to public safety. I really have some concerns about the $500,000 that we let get away from us today. My heart is broken over that. I really felt that we could have used that money to do something else with it, even though we were not in favor of ShotSpotter, some of us, but I think we missed a great opportunity. And I'm saddened about it, because we could have used that money for our city and to help curb some of the violence that's taking place in the city. So I hope that somebody comes up with a better plan, that it will be supported. Also, Thanksgiving is coming up. I pray that everybody have a wonderful Thanksgiving next week. And I want to give a shout out to all my brothers of Omega Size Five Fraternity Incorporated. Today is our Founder's Day, and I just want to say, "Roo-roo" to all my brothers who have my back. Peace, have a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lanier?
I actually don't have much of a comment. You all have a great evening tonight.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Repart?
Thanks, Mayor. Just really have two things to say. One is, you know, last week, we saw the cases rising, and that continues to be the case. Our five-day average is now almost 700 cases a day. And so this is really hard news, and especially with the news from the governor. And I have a quote from my former pastor relayed from one of his professors, is that "All change produces loss, and all loss must be grieved." And so there's so much loss happening right now as a result of this pandemic. A loss of the announcement from the governor, you know, kids are at home, they're not at school, businesses are affected, people's flexibility is challenged. And then there's another loss, another homicide this weekend as well. And so I just offer my encouragement to the community that, please, if you're able, find space to grieve. That loss needs to be grieved well, and find space to support one another in grieving those great losses. And I did just want to say a quick thing about the CARES funding conversation. You know, I know that there are those out there who may question or understand my vote this morning, but I really do remain resolute that we need to innovate right now around a sense of public safety, so everyone in our community feels safe. While it may seem counterintuitive, as resources are getting tighter, to not accept funds, for me, really, the time is now to just be laser accurate in how we're spending money. My perspective from the seat that I sit in is that the first investment we need to make is to lean into community wisdom about how to reduce violence and to reallocate resources to make new investments in cute communities in a different way, so that everybody feels safe. So I believe that we are heading in the right direction, and I believe that we'll still get to the outcomes that we want, even with the loss of that funding this morning. I know that that's a difficult spot. But I remain confident in our staff team. Our staff team is working so hard. I remain confident that our police department is going to continue to make changes in the right direction, and that our chief is going to lead them toward that. And I just want to thank my colleagues. I think that it's no fun to have a 3-3 vote, and it's no fun to give, to let, leave money on the table for some things. But it demonstrates our ability to express ourselves and express our differences with respect. And I feel like we did that this morning, even though we had a 3-3 vote. And so I appreciate everybody's, that sits around this city commission table's commitment and all of the effort that they put into researching and preparing and bringing their full selves to these conversations. Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Isasi?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I don't have too much to say either. I think we had a lengthy conversation at Cal about CARES Act dollars. And what I would point people to is the comments that we had there, because I think we all had different statements and positions of support, and what ultimately led to a split vote. And so I appreciate you, Mayor, talking at the top of the agenda about just kind of what was on the agenda, because even though we post things, even though we share things, we know that people are living busy lives, so I appreciate that additional just communication that we go and add. I think even during this pandemic, it's just so much more needed, so thank you for that. But I'm always happy to share my thoughts. I think I remain committed to looking at what works in our community and what is already happening on the ground, and we have some good work. And sometimes, you know, I always say, like, you know, the work that we might not know about is probably the one that has the most impact, because they're probably having those individual relationships and connection points. And so certainly, I know we all take seriously any loss of life, and, you know, just especially thinking about the gentleman who lost his life this past weekend on Sunday night in our second ward in front of the Creston Market. And so I will continue to push for things that are related to investments in economic investment and, you know, supporting those organizations and initiatives that are evidence-based. Secondly, I just wanted to say that it is so important right now. I feel in some ways, we are a bit of a Groundhog Day of the last meeting that we had in person on March 17. We didn't know what was in front of us on that St. Patrick's Day, but what we do know is that we need to continue support to our families and our staff here at City Hall, or at City Hall where you all are at, just during this time. I think there's just, I know I spent most of yesterday just trying to coordinate things and the questions that people had. And then if you are able to, to please support our local businesses. Many of them, you know, are making plans for that winterization, but obviously with the changes, I think it's the right thing to keep us safe. It's a pause. I think we have more knowledge about it, but if you can support local business, some of our great retailers, think about spending your dollars very locally during this holiday season. Maybe purchase a dessert or a pie or something for your Thanksgiving holiday, and hopefully, we can just continue to move through this together. So thank you, and have a good evening.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to begin by giving a shout out to two individuals I used to serve with on Uptown. I saw from the communications that both Matt Franco and Paul Lee have stepped down from their role. Just wanted to recognize their contribution to the Uptown CID or CIA over the years. Also, I want to recognize the folks over at LinkUp. We were in community development on this morning. We're made aware of the sale of two properties to LinkUp in their efforts to respond to the call of building more affordable housing. So I know that they're going to be hard at work with the projects or with the properties that we have made available to them. And as has been mentioned regarding the young brother who was shot and killed on this past Sunday, his name is Damon Bradley. I want to send out my condolences, and we'll look to reach out to Brother Bradley's family. Brother Bradley represents number 33 in terms of the homicides that we've had this year. He was 43 years old. I really want to really caution those who are watching or in the media space. There was a picture of Mr. Bradley in one of the local media outlets, and it was a picture of him. It was a mugshot. And I want to suggest that that was done in very, very, very poor taste, in that what that does is further adds to, I think, an already growing narrative as it pertains to African-American men in our country. And so it was very disturbing to see that. And again, I know that media, they always have a choice, and I just want to encourage media outlets that if you're going to make the decision to provide a picture of an individual who has been, who's deceased, I would ask that you would consider another photo. And if you can't access another photo, then don't use a photo at all, because to use a photo of a man or a woman, whomever, in terms of their mugshot, there's, that ought to be questioned by more than just me. And so, and as for this morning with regards to the vote that we had regarding the $500,000 from the county, I do, like Commissioner Moody mentioned, I do think we missed an opportunity. I look back, and I think to myself, I mean, something as simple as making the motion with the understanding that no dollars will be used towards ShotSpotter, perhaps could have been a solution, but there's something to be said about, I think that Commissioner Repart talked about the need to be creative. We happen to be operating in a time in which we are trying to do a number of things simultaneously. The goal of the work is to try to reform a police department while also addressing an issue that is pertinent right now, and that is the growing homicide rate in our city, along with a growing number of gun violence and community violence, along with pandemics. And so I agree, there's a need to be creative, and there's a need to recognize that we have to be very thoughtful, even more thoughtful, I think, when it comes to resources that are being made available to us. I want to once again thank my 19 colleagues in the county, at the county commission. If we can remember, colleagues, that it was a week ago when they specifically talked about having to use the money for ShotSpotter, and that was not what was before us on this morning. And so I credit them for their willingness to at least be open to change and to modify their expectation. And I think that we could have gotten there and gotten to a better place, and I think, again, that we missed an opportunity. So I want to wish everyone a wonderful Thanksgiving on next week. Please be safe and take into consideration everything that our governor has mentioned in terms of small group gatherings and just, again, safety in general around this pandemic. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I appreciate you sharing that, as well as, you know, reiterating that our heart, all of our hearts break for every family impacted by violence, every individual that has been touched. So thank you. Let's see, city attorney?
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, City Clerk?
Yeah, just a reminder that the election process still continues on. The Kent County Board of Canvassers, as we're speaking, I believe are finishing up their work of the canvas, and then we'll go to the State Board of Canvassers. So, and then, once the State Board of Canvassers finishes up their work, I believe they're meeting tomorrow morning to start their work. And then after that, then the electors will meet in Lansing, and then, so we continue to go through the process. Obviously, there's been lots of lawsuits that have been filed and withdrawn, and so, you know, we all follow that as well. So that's where we're at with that process. And just as a reminder, at our next meeting, there will be a public hearing on the odd-even year, but that is a per-functionary based on the statute. So the voters in Grand Rapids passed the two charter amendments, and one of them is having to move the even year. Part of, in order to enact it, is to have a public hearing, and then the city commission to adopt a resolution. So just a reminder of that, and that'll be in the roundup of the meeting tonight, too, stating that.
Great. Thanks, City Clerk, for reminding us of that, and I'll make sure that at our next meeting, I make that really clear. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank you and Commissioners for your time today. I do want to salute our city staff for the work that they have done over the past few weeks. Ever since, well, throughout this entire pandemic, but specifically the past three, four weeks have just been a tremendous toll. With the last week in October, both a meeting and a retreat, the following week with the election, where we had all hands on deck. And following that, we had back-to-back city commission meetings last weekend, this weekend, and they have been very, very resilient during these tough times, and we find ourselves as an organization faced with some of the same challenges as the community with increasing infections, even in our workforce. So as we have heard here recently, the city staff has been working very deliberately since hearing the announcement from the state about pausing to save lives, and we have done that. We have modified several city services to where the public can still experience them, but either by appointment. And then you can go on our website to find out which specific services will require appointment. We'll also, I believe, have had a media release releasing that information. But also, we know that we're still in discovery of what the support will be, both from the federal and the state government, if any, moving forward during this recession, particularly during this pause. So I want to thank Mobile GR for partnering with our local retailers to even be more supportive of providing space for takeout services, working with our businesses in the social zone. You've heard today from You've heard today from my Economic Development Office that we released our $1 million Business Assistance Grant Initiative for people who are in either CDBG-targeted area, employ CDBG-employee, are eligible employees that would be CDBG-eligible, or business owners that would otherwise qualify. I also want to thank our partners at The Right Place in the Chamber for their assistance as well. And hopefully, we'll be getting some combined information out for everyone to be able to see what supports are available. And we continue our moratorium on water shut-offs, as well as those who need assistance in providing some of the basic services that they may be in need of. And so, again, hats off to all of the staff for what they do day in, day out. And regarding my condolences, as well to all of the victims of crime this year, particularly the most recent one, I do want to let you know and the community know that the police department is resolved and resilient, so is staff. We will do our best to work with the resources that we have to manage this community, excuse me, manage the city and make sure that we keep it safe. I do likewise want to thank our partners from Kent County for being flexible in reconsidering some of the conditions that they had around the previous award. And I hope that they're able to make good use of that funding moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. And I'll just echo a few things. You know, we are, I am extremely concerned about everyone in our community as we continue to live through this pandemic. And I know I've heard from a lot of families who are struggling. And I encourage you, please, if you need assistance, please reach out to United. Oh, am I back? So I'm encouraging people to please reach out to United Way if they need support. If you are struggling to pay your rent, there is rental assistance available. Please reach out for help. Again, all of us, we are, we need to be checking in on people we care about, but also our neighbors as we still are in this together. And there's a lot of resilience in this community, and we have to continue to lean on that. Our business owners, I know many of them are also struggling. Today, the city announced a small business grant program. Hopefully, that will be helpful and we'll be able to support some of our local businesses who continue to struggle, particularly those who've been shut down with this recent order. So reach out to us, let us know how we can be helpful. And as all of us have said multiple times, you know, if we all do our part in complying with the recommendations, we can flatten this curve. And so we all need to be committed to doing that. And then, you know, even during these really challenging and heartbreaking times, there's still much to be grateful for. So I hope that as we go into Thanksgiving next week, that everyone, all of you and everyone in the community, is able to pause and reflect and identify all that we can still cherish and be grateful for and give us hope during what's been probably one of the toughest years many of us have had in a very, very long time. So with that, Commissioners, you have a good night, and I will look forward to seeing you after the holiday at our first meeting in December. So we're adjourned.